We're going to go ahead and start the meeting. I'll call the meeting to order. It's 5:34. Thank you for your patience. Everyone, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, do you need a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So move to the agenda.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to our action items. The first item up is the real-life MOU North.
Do I have the chairman?
Yes.
I would like to move that we approve the MOUs as listed in Agenda Items D1 through D6.
Okay.
I will second.
I would like to have some discussion on them. Okay. Sorry, Bob.
That's all right.
Within the within the county MOU, can I ask what was discussed for negotiation with them? Or was anything discussed?
Well, I don't know if negotiation is the right word. They've been telling us for the last couple of years that we would have to move to 70%. When I went, I asked if that's where we ended up. Initially, Captain Smart said, "I haven't heard. Let me check." And so he reached out to the Board of the County Commissioners. And they, his response back to me was they they just said that it has to be 70%. So that was, we didn't have a lot of area for negotiations.
Okay. The only reason why I was asking is based on the language within there. It's the salary and the benefits. And I know benefits packages go from a zero to 100. And so I don't know if the benefit package is sort of an average weight or if that's ever been discussed. Or
Oh, I see what you mean.
Do you see what I'm saying?
Yep. I guess I just assume that they figure it the way that we do in that we take their, whatever their salary is and multiply it by 21% to add the mandatory benefits of an employer has to pay there. So their PRC, their FICA, and then whatever the cost is of their medical insurance for the whole year. And then they, and then we paid 10 out of the 12 months. 10, I guess, what is that? 1.6, 5.6, whatever that total is.
Okay. And then within the Heritage Health MOU, did we have legal weight in on their hold harmless? Because when you pull up their agreement and you go to the hold harmless, it says that the district will indemnify, defend, and reimburse. But I have no idea what we will be reimbursing. But their hold harmless for what they will indemnify for us does not include that. So I'm a little cautioned by that. I realize that there were no changes. And I know that last year, when this was brought forward, they went back and forth several times. So I don't, I'm a little cautioned by just that statement. And then on top of that, I would like under under period of coverage, I'd like the second sentence struck.
What number is that?
That's number one. Do we have any other conversations or discussions through these MOUs that are being brought forward?
I have some questions about the extra days.
On the MOUs?
No, that's another, I could add different ones, nevermind.
Okay.
Are we just going down our list?
No, Bob made a motion to just approve all the MOUs.
Okay.
I wanted to have some conversation because of the concerned language in Heritage Health. And then I was curious what type of negotiations had gone on with the county. My struggle is just not that we should not have the shares. I do believe we should continue with the SRO program. But the cost, because the taxpayers are paying 100% on one end, and now we're paying twice on this end. And I was just wondering if anyone had ever looked at the benefits and maybe possibly tried to negotiate those out so that it's just salary? That would allow us a little bit more flexibility and put us more in line with the other agency. But it sounds like nothing's been negotiated. We've just been told this is what it will be. Does anybody have any other questions or conversation?
On the Rathrum MOU, it says the public school fiscal year and it states September to June. And that is not our fiscal year. So I don't know if that should read the public school school year or
Which number?
Hmm, let me go back to it. I just had, I had to put that on the front of it.
I read through this so many times and I totally missed that.
And I don't know if you're aware of this, Lisa, but when Google Docs are uploaded for us to review, we can't make comments on them. We have to go back to the front page.
And that's why.
And it's, there's a lot of bouncing back and forth.
I should have noted that in my, in my question or my statement.
It's under Item 7, Term Amendment Renewal and Termination of Agreement.
Oh, yep. Should be just physical, at least public school year instead of fiscal.
Yep.
Okay.
And do you have the same bulky format that we have as well on the Rathrum one? Where you've got a page number and then language is
Yes, mhm.
Okay, could we maybe fix that?
We'll try to fix that. Yep.
So we're going to approve the MOUs without the salary? Because your statement said you'll come back. If we approve the MOU for the county, then you'll come back with a salary?
The county salaries are in there.
Oh, okay.
It was the city, Rathrum city is when I wrote that, I didn't have any of them. But I do have the Cootney County. So it's just Rathrum that we're waiting on. Which is why the attorney put in there what we paid this year, just so you have reference.
Oh, yeah, because it does state that on the county.
All-Boo, yeah.
So I thought it was all-Boo.
Yep, I didn't, I didn't get, go back and fix that.
When I looked at the county site, there's, wages are updated for 2024, so.
So that's what fiscal year they're in is 2024.
It was just updated April 21st, 2024.
For the 25 fiscal year?
That it does not state.
Oh, okay.
They had like update, update, update. And this was the latest update they had on this year. So you're 24.
Captain Smart, so the numbers that I have in there, Captain Smart said those are, those reflect the wage increases for next school year, or next year.
Okay.
What is in there?
Any further conversation?
Could we amend the motion just to say that they're approved with the corrections as stated? That would be up to Bob.
Or do you want to amend it? Or do you want to change the motion?
Yeah, I'm just asking if we can amend it to include the corrections as we've discussed.
I would accept those changes to the made motion.
I will second. All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Three in favor, two opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to the levy date.
Are we running a levy?
Our levy expires next year. So we either have to run it in November or we have to run it in May if we're going to run a levy.
Right, that's what I asked them, is are we running one? Because we have, we have a date on here to pick a date, but we haven't decided if we're going to run it or not.
Yeah, well, I guess that's part of, that's part of the conversation. We've talked about the levy. So it, May is very late, obviously. So if we're going to run it, we only have November as a choice. I'm not asking that we set an amount tonight. But I, if we don't run the levy, obviously next year we have to cut 9.52 million dollars out of our budget. And 2 million was challenging this year. So I'm hoping that we're going to run at least some, some level of levy to, to help with maintaining our programs.
So just for the general election November?
And it's a really tight timeline if we do November. We have to have the ballot language to the counties by September, which means we have to make some decisions this summer. So it's very tight.
Conversation?
I would move that we direct the administration to begin the planning for a supplemental levy election in November.
Okay. I second. We have a motion and a second. Do we need to have further conversation? So we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Next, we move on to the negotiated agreement slash district proposal.
So there is one change since we have the board, the budget special meeting. When we went back to the IDB team, one of our issues always is recruitment and retention of staff. And the team felt it was important to honor the continuation of the APE stipends. For this year, we did agree to work during the 24-25 school year to find a way to put those dollars into our salary schedule to support the salary schedule at the bottom end of the schedule where the majority of our people who get APE funds sit. So that was an additional 350,000, I think, which came from the difference, and fund, fund balance, the difference between what our bottom is as far as our policy goes, the 8.3%.
The APE stipends are 454,000.
Right, but there was 115 that was already approved by the board at the so it was a difference of about 350. So the, we, because we're going to work on putting that money in, it's one time for this year to continue to fund that. So that the discussion was to use some of that fund balance because we have 9.33 fund balance and our policy says 8.3 is the lowest. So I do want to make sure the board's aware of that. That was different than what we, it was more than what we talked about at the budget workshop.
So the decision was made to use more of the fund balance than what the board approved? Is that what I just heard you say?
Yes, that was the, that was the IDB team. Based on the issue that was raised.
Well, it looks like we increased the APE pass-through adjustments where last year we had one through four categories. This year we added five and increased the amounts of the pass-throughs.
Because in statute, those amounts change. This is the fifth year of the funding of APE. So every year they've gone up. When the board made the decision at the budget workshop, what, what was initially agreed upon by this body was that we would, we would fund the APE stipends at this year's level. So we didn't increase those amounts. And we didn't, we didn't add the fifth year. So everybody got to take a step, with the exception of people who were in APE 4. They were, they were going to stay there. And so during IDB, as we worked through that, the, the issue that was raised was recruitment and retention. And that was the brainstorm. And that was what the team agreed to bring to the board.
Okay, and then I thought that we had stated, can you kind of give me some context on the association leave? That the district would no longer be paying for substitutes for association days?
I think we actually looked in statute and if, if I remember correctly, I think that's in statute that we support that in that way, that activity in that way.
I thought we reviewed the statute many times and came to the same conclusion that it doesn't support that statement.
I have to go back and look, I don't remember.
Did you happen to reach out to legal counsel to get guidance on that?
Okay.
Okay. So the certified scout salary schedule remained the same with the exception of the APE pass-through adjustments?
Correct.
Okay. Any further conversation or discussion?
What did, what statute is that that you guys are referencing?
I'm looking at it right now.
Okay. It's 33/513. Okay.
Do you know exactly what sub-section you were writing in? Let me roll it. 33/513.
When we were discussing it, it was paragraph 2 of Point 1 that states, "The Board of Trustees shall withhold the salary of any teacher who does not hold a teaching certificate valid in the state. It shall not contract to require any teacher to make up time spent in attending any meeting called by the State Board of Education or by the State Superintendent of Public Instruction, nor while attending regularly scheduled official meetings of the State Teachers Association." That's the only thing in that, that statute that speaks of the State Teachers Association. And I recall when we were discussing this, I believe I asked you to check with legal counsel just to make sure. But I guess that didn't happen.
I didn't write that down, so.
So does anybody want any further conversation on the negotiated agreement?
I'm not sure if the board is aware that the LEA has, I'm told, has ratified with an overwhelming majority of the staff going in favor of the negotiated agreement.
Okay.
And with that, I would move that the board approve the negotiated agreement.
Okay, and in reviewing from last year, we also need to approve the 24-25 certified salary schedule?
As, as part of it.
As part of the motion, yeah. So is your motion to approve the negotiated agreement and the 24-25 certified salary schedule? Perfect. One second. We have a motion and a second. Do we need any further discussion? No. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to extra contract days. So if I'm understanding this correctly, we're still stipending, you're still recommending that we stipend the LEA president, however we do it through extra days? Supplemental contract?
Yes.
Okay.
So I think the discussion initially about the stipending the LEA president had nothing to do with that position being stipend. Nobody was against that. The issue was that being that that position is for the specific representation of the teachers and whomever, right, joins it, that they, just like any other professional association, they foot the bill and knock the taxpayer because there's no taxpayer representation in that position. That was the issue. So I just want that to be clear. The board never had any issue or the discussion had nothing to do with it being a stipend. It was that it was stipended with taxpayer money when it was not a taxpayer representation position. So we're back to the same thing again, sort of, I guess. You know, so just, because we didn't bring that up last time. And I thought, oh, I should have probably said something and I didn't. And then I missed a meeting where I was going to say something. Anyways, I just wanted to put that out there. It was never about it being, you know, a stipend for the position.
And I, I appreciate what you said and I, I hear that. I guess the rea, I just, the reason that I bring this forward is that if we go back in time, eight or nine years, we did not have a great working relationship with our teachers. And Jason and Lynn and Kelsey and I meet and Brooke meet weekly to talk about things that are coming up that pertain to the teachers and which allows us to problem solve and deal with those things when things are small. And so through that work, we have a great working relationship with our teachers. So I, I hear what you're saying. But I, I do feel like Jason also is kind of moving forward some of our district goals through the work that he's doing. And what I, in my mind, what I was thinking with the extra days contract instead of just saying that we're going to stipend the president is, is in his case, I would like to be able to give him an extra day, extra contract days because he's going to be working outside of this contract hours to meet with us, to, to work together to solve some of these issues where maybe when Jason steps down, the next president isn't willing to do that. And I don't want to be locked in to a stipend for that person. So this, I feel, gives us some flexibility to ensure that there is good work being done on behalf of everybody within the district.
Yeah, well, I'm glad you brought that up about if that person, because we really shouldn't put it to the person. It's the position itself. So you're right. If a bad apple shows up, we can't say, oh, well, we're taking the stipend because you're a bad apple. You know, we can't do that. So therefore, that's even more reason that the taxpayer doesn't foot the bill in any way, shape, or form. And the working relationship should not be based, good or bad, on a dollar figure. It should be based upon the fact that we are all, as we say over and over and over, what's best for kids.
Right.
Right? So, and the representation is for the staff, not the district or the taxpayer. I think we're muddying the waters as much as we've tried to get away from, you know, trying to split the things where they actually lie, you know, whether it's now or somewhere down the road. you know, whether it's now or somewhere down the road, you know. That was, anyways, that was my only thing. I just wanted to clarify that in what it was.
Yeah, I think, you know, when we had the discussion before, I recall what seemed to be our thinking of, you know, doing that separation based on whether or not it's appropriate for taxpayers to pay for representation to the LEA. What came about later, at least in my understanding, is some of what Lisa just talked about. I was not aware of how much actually time and effort is put in by the LEA president for the benefit of the district as a whole. Sure. Not just for the benefit of his membership, but in meeting periodically with district leadership team, meeting periodically with building principals and others to kind of troubleshoot head off things that, you know, could mushroom into something that would be unfortunate. And that's truly a good thing, I think, in terms of the district as a whole. And so for us to recognize and to accept some responsibility to help fund that, or however you wanna put it, I think is appropriate.
So let me ask you this. If we're not, if we don't approve these, this extra income for Jason to be the LEA president and work with the district, does that mean that that's gonna stop, that the small concerns, questions, et cetera, that that's not gonna happen anymore? That you're not gonna have those meetings anymore? Is that what that's saying?
No, I'm sure we will continue to have the meetings. I just, I guess I look at it in the same way I look at all of the rest of our staff when we ask them. And I am asking, I guess, it's important to me that we're able to meet, so I am asking that of him. And so, you know, when we do that with somebody else, we pay extra days stipends. So I'm just looking at it through that pain. But we have a really good working relationship, so I would say that, I don't think Jason's doing it for the money. But I do know he puts a lot of time and energy into supporting the work that we're trying to do, the initiatives that we have in place, and so that's why I brought it.
Again, if that collaborative working relationship, not only with you, but with others throughout the district, pays dividends for the district as a whole, and particularly for the kids that were serving, then I think we ought to recognize that.
I understand you wanna give them extra, you know, money, but that money that they collect for dues is what that's for, period. I've never heard of a company ever paying for a union, never.
Are you going to ask the board on that?
May I? Does the board have any qualms with Jason speaking?
No.
Okay.
All right, let me just come to the podium.
Jason Bradbury, LEA president. With all due respect, most unions get to do mandatory membership. So when you enter a job site, you're a union, and so they automatically get to take those funds. We have three hundred and seventeen teachers certified, or three hundred, over three hundred people. We only service voluntarily, you know, a hundred and sixty-five teachers, or a hundred and fifty-five teachers. And then the rest are classified staff, and that's all voluntary to where they pay those dues. We can't mandatorily, I wish, if we could mandatorily make everybody that works for Lakeland School District a union member, then we could pay for those dues.
You can't. It's a right to work state.
We can't.
Right, it's a right to work state.
Right. But that's when you're talking unions, that's what, that's what happens.
Even with federal government, that wasn't allowed. I worked for the federal government. We had unions. They did not get paid by the federal government. They got paid by their union. That's why they pay union dues. If you need time off, then your union reimburses you.
Yeah, we're this school district, that's what I say, but we're not, we're not a union or an association. Yes, there are some similarities, but it just doesn't work that way. We cannot charge what everybody else charges. And so there's just, it just doesn't work that way.
What bugs me the most, Jason, is that you're worried about this stipend. We've got people being laid off.
Now you're getting personal.
No, I'm not. That's not personal. Your job is to protect jobs and working environment and stuff like that, okay?
Wish I'd do that.
That's fine. What I'm saying, we have people getting laid off, and you're worried about this. That's what runs me wrong. Taxpayers shouldn't be put in with that bill. We already have levies and bonds and everything else.
Thank you. Any other questions for anyone up here?
Trustee Quinney, I just wanna clarify, I didn't bring this forward because Jason asked me to. I'm bringing this forward because I think it's important.
Any further conversations on this?
I don't know how many days we're thinking on that.
Yes, we, in order to be comparable to that, sorry, Brooke Cunningham, Director of HR, in order to be comparable to what his stipend was this year, it would, it actually, if he had twelve days with the new step in his daily rate, he'd fall just under what his stipend is. In order for him to get just a little bit more, it would be thirteen days.
I'm trying to remember, the extra days for counselors, is it ten, thirteen?
The high schools, fifteen.
And ten at the elementary, I think.
Um, I think. I'm sorry, counselors at the high schools are thirteen, middle schools are eight, elementary are five.
Okay, thank you. I was just trying to equate that, so. I would move to further sit on Dan's recommendation for the extra day approach.
Without an understanding of how many extra days, there's no value to this that's been presented to the board to approve, just the methodology.
No, we can stipulate the thirteen if that's what you'd like.
That's up to you. It's your motion.
Included in the motion, thirteen days extended contract.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Three against, the motion does not carry. Would anyone like to bring forward a different motion? No alternative motion?
I guess, like you said, we don't know what the true cost, dollar wise, but I don't know that it would change, it wouldn't change my opinion.
There's no alternative motion?
Is, may I ask of the board, is the issue the number of days or just the issue itself?
It's the issue itself.
I understand that.
It means the issue itself.
I just think that, like I already said, I agreed when we had the discussion, that he represents, or that position represents a body, not the taxpayer. And I get the whole, we're meeting and making a joyous, you know, working relationship, and we should do that anyways. You know, the IBB, instead of the old way of negotiating, that's why the IBB, the interest-based bargaining was put into place, was because it was, the point was to make it.
A collaborative effort.
Correct, yeah.
And that's what we're suggesting here, is that he pursues a collaborative effort.
Right.
Well, what I feel is you're suggesting that the money produces the collaborative effort, that we're not going to have a collaborative effort unless we pay for it on the backs of the taxpayers.
Well, maybe I'm confused, because it was my understanding that the reason to make this move is so that we take it away from the individual and talk about the position, and that it'd be a collaborative position. And if we have somebody who's in that position who's not willing to do that, then that supplemental contract would go away, as any other supplemental contract could be dispensed with. Is that correct?
Yes.
But regardless, what I'm saying is we're paying for collaboration. We're not gonna be collaborative unless we have money. That's what I feel like is being presented.
Yeah, I agree with that. Those things are always two-way streets.
I agree. I agree.
So if we create an expectation on one side, isn't fair to have that on the other side?
Well, maybe there needs to be discussion on if the expectation is even reasonable. I don't know.
I don't know. I think it's truly unfortunate, and I'm not disagreeing with anything that you've said, Dean, but I think it's truly unfortunate that we have a circumstance where we have a position that's willing to put in extra time and extra effort and do it on a collaborative basis, and we're not willing to recognize the value of that.
The position has, is not a position in the district. The position is set in statute for the sole purpose of representation, to negotiate for the teachers with the district. It's not a district position. The interest-based bargaining is what was set in place to make it collaborative. You know, just like they get together and negotiate, and we get together and do our thing, then we come together. The position is not a district position. The position solely exists because it's in the statute, and the teachers have a right to have representation.
So is a counselor identified in statute?
Yes, actually, well, it's in a DAP rule, and it is some in statute, yes, and we're supposed to have so many per pupil population.
Right.
Well, I guess I just have a different view, because, you know, what I hear is, you know, he's acting not only on behalf of the association that he represents, but he's acting on behalf of the district as a whole, somewhat of an ombudsman or a troubleshooter, however you wanna kind of describe it. And the, you know, the value of that is almost indescribable in some ways, because heading off issues long before they become out of control is extraordinarily important. And if we have somebody who's willing to put out the effort and take the time, sometimes on his own time outside, which, you know, that's part of what the recognition would be, then we ought to be doing that, so I don't know.
Yeah, he's acting on behalf of the LEA, but he's also acting with interest.
Of the district as a whole.
For the district as well.
Now, if he, if that position heads off some issue, that saves us one set of labor fees.
That pays for itself.
We more than benefited from it in what we've been spending extra dollars.
Well, given that he has a full contract, but he's working four periods and has a prep, he's not working the full six periods.
Not next year. He's working the full six periods next year.
Oh, that's not in the email he provided to us, so, okay.
And that's one.
I don't have a problem with that. If he, you know, if he's just getting time off to go do union stuff, that's one thing, but, you know, you gotta pay his sub too, right? Or if he doesn't have class, you don't have to worry about it, but.
I'll ask again, does anyone wanna bring forward any motion on the extra contract days?
So he will be teaching no prep period?
He'll not teach like everybody else does, so five periods and a prep.
We have seven periods, but averages out to the same.
Sorry?
Seven periods, so I'll teach six in prep.
Is it inappropriate to add an additional prep period for Jason for for LEA work?
That's what he's doing this year, basically.
But it was only half day, right?
Well, that was what it was supposed to be, but the, Lenny Principal didn't realize that, so I think you had, you talked, you had two periods off, that's what he did this year.
I would move to allow that additional prep period for LEA work.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion dismissed. We can move on to the discussion items. First up is the supplemental curriculum. The supplemental curriculum approval process.
Yeah, so the last few policy committee meetings, we have gotten stuck on the, what used to be the learning materials, and now everything is supplemental. But there was a lot of discussion at the last meeting about how hard it is with the timeframe to get things approved. And there was a recommendation that maybe we do a workshop with the board to allow the teachers to sit with the board and problem solve how to make this process flow a little bit better. So we have a situation where in the, our teachers are teaching, and they get to a point in a lesson where the kids aren't getting it, and they can't go to their filing cabinet and pull out something they've used before. And what they're wondering is, all of those documents that they've had, some people for decades, do those all have to come forward and be formally approved, because they haven't been? And how do you do that without overwhelming the supplemental curriculum committee? In addition to that, we have tens of thousands of classroom library books that we have to figure out how to work so they're gonna get approved. So they are just requesting that, an opportunity to sit with the board and actually dialogue with the board to get to a point where So they are just requesting that, an opportunity to sit with the board and actually dialogue with the board to get to a point where, um, they have what they need to teach the kids in the moment.
So are we good with finding a workshop? Do we wanna have, mm-hmm?
Yeah.
Okay.
No.
No. Okay, Bob doesn't want a workshop on this?
I, I fully understand, appreciate what they're asking for. I think the problem lies here in that we end up being a roadblock to the efficiency of the district's efforts to do what's right in adopting curriculum and materials and taking care of our kids. And here we sit tonight, on a night when the awards assembly is taking place over at the high school, where we should be.
I agree.
Arguing over this kinda stuff.
Yeah, the curriculum thing, unfortunately, with all the legislation that's come through the last couple of years, that's where our hands are tied. Right? Because the law specifically states this has to happen, that has to happen, blah, 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 before any curriculum. Um, but I agree, it's frustrating. To have to think that we have to look at every piece of paper, you know?
It's, it's nonsense for us to have to approve every piece of paper and every little thing that comes across the horizon in a teacher's daily work. I just, I cannot understand that. I've been in the classroom, I know what that's like. And it's craziness to say that I can't use an article out of today's newspaper unless I have it approved by the school board. It's stupid. I'm sorry, but that's.
I would agree with you on that. I don't have a qualm with that whatsoever. As Ramona said, the law speaks one specific way. So if we wanna just disregard that, then I guess that's a discussion and an action item we need to have with, on the agenda.
It's not my interpretation, it says we have to have a committee with so many.
We have a committee, so let the committee do their work. Why do we have to rubber stamp every single little thing that comes down the road?
Well, that is part of, that is part of the committee, that's what they're saying.
Well, then couldn't you stamp, so I can stamp and that stuff and move on?
That was the, that was the frustration, is that because they have to have, the committee is the problem. So we're trying to figure out, how do you do it without a committee? That's where the discussion was. The committee is the problem.
Let the teacher choose the materials they need to work with, and if they run afoul, then we'll take care of them. But the, the, the thing of throwing a roadblock in front of everybody constantly is nonsense. And I don't care what that law says, it's still nonsense. We will know that legislature, in their infinite wisdom, doesn't always come up with the best course of action.
Absolutely agree with you on that.
We met, we asked them to actually call this district, if no other district, when we met with them, to let somebody know, hey, how does this affect everybody? We, that's why we had a roundtable with all of them, was for that purpose, but.
We need for the committee to just come forward and recommend that all of those ditto's and everybody's filing cabinets are approved. As of this date, we're moving forward, and all of that old stuff is approved at this point.
And we, we did have that conversation early on when we first, uh, when we first made the change to, um, include the supplemental, um, curriculum committee. There was discussion about, let's just, we're not gonna bring everything from, that we've always had, but we're gonna start from here going forward. Everything will come through the, that process, which is how we've been operating until we had the, um, the issue with, um, the book at Lakeland Middle School where nobody could find it by the title in, in any approved document, and so it came through the process. And so now we have teachers who are really afraid to use things that they've always used, um, to work with kids.
Well, it came about because of the new laws that came through, that's why the policy came back to the committee, it wasn't because of that. It was because all these new library laws and stuff that got passed. When I attended the one meeting, that's why I asked, because there's pages and pages that we never had before. We had two paragraphs, and that was it. But because of the new law, the, you know, whether we use them or not, I guess we got, uh, ISBA's latest greatest thing, and that's where all that came from. It wasn't us, it wasn't anything, so I mean, we could go back to the other thing, or, um.
The, the new laws really is specific to the harmful and obscene, and that is specific, um, we actually kinda dealt, delved into that in the last policy committee meeting, and it, that language says that only a minor parent can bring forth, uh, a file, a challenge for that book, if the child is given that, access to that book at school. So it's only the minor parent who can do that part of it. Um, uh, but, um, there's something else you just said that I wanted to address.
Well, that was the explanation I was given, when I asked, why were we back with this policy, because when we had was two paragraphs and simple.
Right.
Because I was trying not to do that, that was my suggestion, but everybody was insistent that we gotta do this new one, so there we are.
And the ISBA, um, template that we were working off of, um, actually identified, learning materials didn't have to go to the board for approval. And then the policy committee, we changed that, that, that was one of the changes that were made, um.
Well, it was made simply because no one could describe or identify specifically what learning materials were. And bottom line was, it, a learning material is a sup- is a supplement to the curriculum. So for clarification, because everyone was getting hung up on words, we changed learning materials to supplemental curriculum. So based on Bob's recommendation, it sounds like, um, he would like, for the June board meeting, to have an action item, uh, with regard to, um, supplemental materials that are outside of a curriculum. Giving teachers the authority to, you know, do what they need to do. Make a judgment call and.
Yeah. So if we have that at that meeting, um, it's very possible that the policy should have some language in there to meet those needs, at Bob's recommendation, and then that policy could be approved. Does that sound fair, Bob?
Yep.
Okay. Anybody else have any input on that?
Nope, I don't have any on that, but, um, it sounds like, uh, Bob wanted to get to that, uh, presentation over there, so, I mean, do we necessarily have to go through all, and they're just discussion items, we're not doing anything, so I would move that we adjourn the meeting and move all these discussion items to the June meeting. So if we, Bob can get to the, whatever's going on at the high school over there.
It's an awards assembly.
Okay.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Any opposed, in your favor, motion carries.
Excuse me, the board, I'm sorry to interrupt, HR Director Brooke Cunningham. I do believe you guys had the superintendent evaluation on the agenda tonight, and by statute, that's due June first. So I just wanted to remind you all of that.
For the most part, but we have to go over it with the superintendent, and we have to have a conversation before we go over it with the superintendent.
Great job.
So, um. So we do, um, you made a motion, but should it.
Just to carry all the discussion items.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so then I need a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code at seventy-four two oh six one feet. Motion and a second. I need a roll call vote.
Chair Thompson.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bane.
Yes.
Trustee Grissom.
Yes.
Trustee Quimby.
Yes.
And trustee Jones.
Yes.
And that, we are in executive session. I need to ask for a few to. All right, so we've come out of executive session, um, and I will entertain any motions at this time.
I move to terminate the superintendent's contract and replace it with a new three-year contract.
Second. We have a motion and a second, we need a roll call vote.
Chair Thompson.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bane.
Yes.
Trustee Grissom.
Yes.
Trustee Quimby.
Yes.
And trustee Jones.
Absolutely.
Are there any other emotions? Motions, not emotions?
Emojis.
Emojis.
I'll move to approve the superintendent's recommendation to not, not renew the contract for personnel five point two nine point two one eight twenty-four.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing them, the motion carries, and on that note, we'll adjourn the meeting at seven forty-eight.